Let me have your attention, please. We're gonna go ahead and start the first of our two meetings. The first one should be fairly brief before we get into the regular council meeting. The first is a public hearing, a required public hearing for our annual update of our capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan as part of our comprehensive plan for Impact Teams. So that being said, I will ask Mr. Patton if he would come on up and provide any information that we need. We talked about this in the past, and this is just the public hearing portion of it, and you can answer any questions that council may have at that time, or any input from the public.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing. It is required by state law. This is for the annual update, capital improvements, all that part of comprehensive plans specifically for Canton's Impact Team Program. This will be on the regular agenda to discuss and answer any questions that council may have. We have a deadline to go through this process and have it reviewed, and then opt to send it back for second review. But this is just a public hearing for receiving input.
Okay. It has been available, I assume, to the public for a period of time now, and would welcome any comments from the public regarding this proposed capital improvements plan. Okay. I probably be short, so I guess it will be. So with that being said, we will close the public hearing portion of this, and we will adjourn this public hearing. And we will move now to our regular council meeting. And call our council meeting to orders October the 5th, 2017. And please, if you will, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, what happens in Vegas does not always stay in Vegas. Fifty-nine souls were in Las Vegas to gamble with their money, not their lives. They now find themselves in your presence. Over 500 were injured. What did residents of Las Vegas and residents around this great country do when faced with this horrific tragedy? Roll up their sleeves to help and give blood. Please pray for the families of those injured, pray for Las Vegas, and pray for the United States of America. In your name we pray. Amen.
We'd like to welcome our guests and visitors tonight. This is a, we have a few special awards we'd like to pay. We have a number of teachers here who have been chosen by their peers, the other teachers within their school, to be the Teacher of the Year from those schools. And we're extremely proud to have them here tonight, and would like to recognize each of them with a small plaque, because, you know, no one knows more than the council how important education is to the, to a community. It's, you know, it's the lifeblood of community, education. So we do appreciate the efforts that they put in, and all teachers put in, but these have been, these are outstanding teachers. They've been chosen, so we'd like to make some presentations here. And would ask that, if you would, when you come up, to get your plaque, you just kind of move to one area till we get each of the teachers up. There's about five or six, I think, all the schools that are located within our city limits. Which school are you with? Knox Elementary. And Sandra Feiter, is that right?
Yes.
She's with Teasley Middle School. Thank you. Ms. Lydia Bradrickson. And Mr. Mark Thompson from Hasty Elementary.
Hi, Mom.
Hang up here, man. We're gonna give everybody a tip, okay? Okay. How you wanna do this?
I'm on the left.
You'll take them and then I'll go. Everybody scream stuff pretty good here. Congratulations. Welcome to stay for this whole meeting if you want. But I probably wouldn't either. We have a couple of, have a couple of proclamations here that I would just read. I don't believe anyone is here at this point to receive them, but they have asked that we recognize these particular areas here. The Fellowship of Christian Athletes, since 1954, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes has been challenging coaches and athletes on the professional college, high school, junior high, and youth levels to use a powerful medium of athletics for Christian fellowship. And whereas FCA is the largest Christian sports organization in America and focuses on serving local communities by equiting, empowering, and encouraging people to positively impact the world through the example of Christ. And whereas the four main values thought by FCA are integrity, service, teamwork, and excellence. And whereas on October the 11th, 2017, parents, students, and coaches will come together on their local high school athletic fields for an event called Fields of Faith, presenting an opportunity for students to share their testimonies with one another. Fields of Faith was started in 2002 in Oklahoma and has now grown to become a nationwide FCA ministry. And therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Canton do hereby designate Winston, October the 11th, 2017, as Fellowship of Christian Athletes Day in Canton, Georgia, on the occasion of their eighth annual Fields of Faith event. Also have one that is Red Ribbon Week, which is always very, a really good one. We have done this one, had this one on a number of occasions, I think, for a few years. Basically, it says that communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in the education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. Whereas Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camanera, oh, that's right, very close, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle, involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23 through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Gene Ogden, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim October the 23rd through the 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week in Canton, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. And we have a couple, we have a couple of Marines there. Do we, we don't have that plaque here, do we? No. We have prepared a plaque that was to be presented to, did someone in particular ask for it?
Yes, Mr. Chatten.
Oh, Mr. Chatten? Okay, and we will, we will be providing that to him. Okay. Thank you. All right. Employee recognition, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. If I can have Officer Alexander Crawford, Officer Taina Cruz, and Officer Robert Marinosio These are our, we always want Mayor and council and our community to meet our newest officers. These will be, these are our newest officers. They'll be out in the community beginning tomorrow in the field training program, and we think it's important that you meet, meet our new officers who will be out protecting our city, engaging with our community. Officer Alexander Crawford comes to us here, comes to us from, with experience with the Cherokee, in corrections, excuse me, with the Sheriff's Office, and he'll be assigned to our field training program starting tomorrow. Officer Robert Marinosio here, he is, comes to us with 30 years' experience, corrections of law enforcement out of the state anymore. And he just recently also graduated the academy, and will be entering our field training program. Officer Taina Cruz comes to us with several years, with years' experience in the law enforcement profession, and will be starting in our field training program tomorrow. But again, we think it's very important for you to meet our new officers. And without, last thing is, when they go through the course of the 11-week academy, there are, there's an officer that wins the class flag for having a good positive attitude, a hard work ethic. Not saying that these two gentlemen did not, but we're gonna present her, we had her, which they did, so, but we're presenting her with her frame, the class flag from the class. So just thank you. Meet our new officers. Might take just two seconds, sir. I just want to, and I haven't publicly done this, I just want to thank you from the hard working men and women at the Canton Police Department, our officers, you're dedicated to this city. Thank you for all the support that the city manager, that council, and the mayor have given us this year. So we couldn't do it without you. We can't do it without the community support. We can't do it out. I was thinking with the educators here, we've got a tremendous partnership with our education, with the Cherokee School District, and it all works together. And I just wanted to publicly say that. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. We would like to thank you for, for you and your officers who do an amazing job here in our city. We appreciate it very much. Public service announcement was left off the agenda, but we added it in there, so.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna ask for an agenda amendment.
We gotta go ahead and.
It's short tonight. Canton Main Street is having a juke night, tomorrow night, downtown Canton from 6:00 to 9:00 P.M. The band is Motel Cowboys, and this is the first Friday of October. It is the last first Friday celebration of the year. Canton Theater, October 6th through 15, an original world premiere of Stuck in Suburbia by Dwayne Willoughby by Broadway Bound Productions at the Canton Theater, 7:30, and the Sunday matinee at 2:00. Cherokee County Arts Center, October 6th through 26, has a show by the Georgia Clay Council, and the reception on October 6th, which is tomorrow, first Friday, is at 6:30 until about 8:00 or 8:30, and that reception is open to the public and free, of course, and there should be some nice beverages and nibbles there for you along with the beautiful art. Cherokee County Historical Society and Museum, October 11th, is mapping Cherokee. A new temporary exhibit will open at the Cherokee County History Museum and Visitors Center. October 20 through 21, Historic Homes Tour between Canton and Waleska, presented by the Cherokee County Historical Society. This is October 20th from 5:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M., and October 21st from 11:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M. Tickets are $25, and you can get those tickets through the Historical Society. October 6th and 7th, Appalachian Trail of the Atlanta Area Council of Boy Scouts of America Scottish Games and Fall Campere is at Bowlin Park. October 9th through 12th, Cherokee Family Violence Center will have a vigil in Cannon Park. It's a candlelight vigil to bring awareness to family violence. October 10th at 7:00 P.M. Hope I'll see you there.
Anyone else have an announcement? Thank you, Mr. Grue. Okay, I will entertain a motion to consider the agenda. I don't think there's, is there, Miss Peppers, you have something you will do?
I'm gonna cover under my com.
Okay, so are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion, Mr. Russ, seconded, Mr. Grant.
There is people.
Either one. It was sort of, I guess, I don't know, but, Mr. Grant made the motion, we know. Okay. All in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members approve. Motion. New section, Ms. Jo Ellen is not here tonight, out of town, I think. You have in your agenda package the minutes from the September 21st council meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to be made to those? If not, entertain a motion that we approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Ms. McGrue and Mr. Goodman. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Also, in your agenda package, you have the financial statements for the month of August. Are there any questions? Financial officer is present to answer any question that you may have. Any questions? This is for informational purposes only, so does not need any vote. Mr. Grant.
I just want to confirm, I know the, on the wastewater treatment facility, we have these highlighted numbers with the latest change orders that have been included. Just wanted to confirm that those were the final figures closed out from that.
They are. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Did we have a ten minute public input? No, yes, on the list. Okay, so, item nine, old business. Discussion of fee waiver application for Steve House, Lynn Moir, and, okay, you're gonna have that. Okay, come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilor. I was told to be here, and I did all of the necessary paperwork that I was supposed to do regarding the fee waiver application. And this was offered to me by Matthew Thomas, our economic manager here. And so I did receive a letter from City Manager Billy Peppers, and so I was told to be here this evening to discuss this. You have any questions for me?
I think, I think what we do, you know, anyone that has any question or anything, they would take that, I assume this is like an appeal that, that we would discuss during our work session and make any decision on our 20, our 19th meeting. So does anyone have any, any particular questions regarding this appeal? Ms. McGrue.
Yes. I was wondering, why is this coming to council? Isn't that something that's usually decided when a business is getting ready to open up? Business.
Well, I think the reason is because it was denied and, and by the city manager, which apparently is what the policy or procedure calls for, for them to either grant or deny. And then if, if it is denied, they can come before the city council for an appeal process.
What was the process of denial?
I received the application and stated on the application in the instructions is that, I'll read it to you, "Application must be complete for consideration of the waiver Disposition of the application shall be by the city manager of the city of Canton. Approval of this application must be accomplished prior to issuance of permits and must be included with permitting application." I received the application and probably 60 days ago or less, and the initial permits were issued on the project in October of last year. So that was my reason for denying.
Any questions? Mr. Grant.
Couple of questions. Ms. Moir said that Mr. Thomas forwarded applications for you.
Correct.
When, when was that? When was this?
That was in February.
Of this year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then one other question I had, and looking at the requests that were made, I think there's four separate ones, four or five?
Yes.
And I noticed that some are two different contractors, I believe, one was to, to you, and I just wondered how that works. I assume you were billed for those permits through.
Right, payment was, that's correct. Payment was from me to the contractors.
Okay. So I didn't know how that worked as far as, should it work?
So if there were, it would have to go back to who paid it, I would assume, and then they would reimburse you if that, if that were done.
I'm not sure I'm following you.
I guess the city could probably only reimburse the person that actually wrote the check.
Which is me. Yes, that's correct.
Oh, so you wrote the check?
Yes.
For that? Well, I thought you, I thought you hired a contractor, they came in, and the, the payment was from someone else.
Well, in order to, for them to have the permit, they have to do that because they're licensed. But this fee waiver application is, in my understanding, to benefit small business coming into town. So I'm the small business. The contractors, they pay for their permits in order to do the work. I pay them, I reimburse them for the permit.
Okay.
Is the total amount of fees, is it $800, $400?
That's correct, sir.
Four, $100 fees?
It's $800 total.
Why was there never a fee waiver request made when you made the original?
Well, if you were to read the contents of the letter that I sent to our city manager, it explains what had happened. I was reading an article in our newspaper about this particular offer that was being given to small business owners moving into town, and we were in the process of getting all moved in and building, and so I.
This is, when, when did you read this article?
It was during this period of time, whenever we were building, and you have to understand it took us almost six or seven months just to get in, to build that down. And I could find out that information for you. But it was during, it was still, it was, it was all about circumstance. It was, you know, finding out the article. Whenever this was paid, that was not offered to us as a small business owner, that, that this benefit was for people just moving into town. So was totally unaware of it. And of course, Matthew, I contacted him immediately, received the fee waiver application, filled out the information, and we submitted it. Somehow or another, with a lot of paperwork that we were doing, it got misplaced in some of the paperwork. So once we found it, we went ahead and submitted it. So that's, that's why I'm here.
Anyone else have a question? What is the purpose of the, of this incentive is, is what?
All that, all that says on the instructions, the purpose of this application is to request a waiver of customary permitting fees associated with building in or development within the city of Canton. I assume that when it was put in place, that the reason was to put together an incentive package for individuals to bring a business to Canton. Okay, that's all I have is the application.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Just a comment, just to appreciate your investment in downtown Canton, and we're glad you're here, so.
Absolutely. Billy, Billy, the only real reason why you rejected it is just because by rule, you had to do it. And it wasn't, according to the rules, it's supposed to be in before the cart was not before the horse, so.
All I have is the procedure and the instructions.
So that's the only reason why you rejected it.
Correct. And that's why, that's why I reached out to Ms. Moir and said she could offer an appeal, because, I mean, if I'm held to just approving based on the instructions and I can't do it, then it would ultimately fall.
Thank you. Okay, if there, is there are no other questions, then we will, the council will be voting on the 19th.
On the 19th of March.
Yes, on the 19th. That's our regular voting meeting. This is our normal work session. We will occasionally vote on things that have time constraints or emergencies in this, but generally, it's, it's a work session to get all the information, discuss about it for a couple of weeks, and then they vote on the next second meeting of the month.
I see.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. How to be? Discussion of possible action on this quit plane deed that we discussed, I believe, at the last meeting. Billy, you want to mention that one again, refresh everybody's memory?
This is that request from WAG Real Estate to LLC, who's acquiring the property, which is at the core of Canton Mill, Canton Mill Extension and Riverstone for the Popeyes Development.
Oh, yeah.
And there was a concern on their original deed, the way the lines were drawn, that the city had an interest in property that is clearly not ours. And so this is just us saying, we don't have an interest in that property that is not ours.
Considering this is, I believe there's some time constraints on this, obviously, because there's a contract on, apparently, that needs to be done for, for the Popeyes construction. I think we need to go ahead and take action on that one, and, and in addition, it's under old business. It was discussed at the last meeting. Any? Motion to approve? I have a motion. Ms. McGrue made the seconded. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. All right, I would say, discussion of possible actions to approve a professional services agreement with Hayes James not to exceed $125,000 for the Edwah Trail East project. Because I do believe this one is under time constraints because of a grant deadline at the end of this month, so we may well want to consider action on it as well. Do you want?
That's correct. If you recall back during the summer, I provided with you a layout of what Hayes and James were working on as a conceptual plan for the trail. They put together a package for their professional cost to be able to move forward with the construction designs, and also the permitting. As you'll recall, we also have to work, as it relates to the trail, with Patriot Railroad, Georgia Department of Transportation, as it relates to the interstate advancements for those bridges, and also with environmental protection. And so that scope of work is also included in their, in their deed.
This is, this is, this is the trail that's going from Edwah River Park East under the interstate, hopefully, on the, on ramps going on to exit 20. And hopefully, it will go under there and, and connect in with 45 acres that we got when we consolidated, from the county, when we consolidated with our fire department. So the trail will be extended easterly, a considerable distance, all the way to where there's a trestle at the river up there, which is, I'm not sure what the distance there's a trestle at the river up there, which is, I'm not sure what the distance is, if you recall. It's a ways, anyway.
I think it ends up being about two miles when you add in some passive trails off of this concrete spot.
Okay. And that one is probably more, it's probably, it's going to be a lot less expensive than the other one we're about to talk about as well. But this, this one has, we're trying to go ahead and apply, and this, Hayes James will be doing that for us as well, a land and water conservation fund, a grant. And it has to be in fairly shortly before the end of the month, I think, so that's one reason we need to go ahead and get them moving to do that application or pre-application. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Second. Have a motion to approve. Mr. Russ seconded the motion. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voted for motion. Thank you. The next item is another trail project that we're looking at, and have been looking at this one for some time, and hopefully, this one will begin to get started here before too awfully long as well. And this is, is the Edwah River Trail westward from Heritage toward Bowling Park. And we've had a bit of work already into, I think, maybe a draft, a layout, something, I'm not sure exactly how detailed we have it, I don't think we got to the construction plans or anything on the end at this point. But you want to handle that one?
Yes, so we, Atkins, who designed the trail that connects between Heritage and Edwah River Park, I've had conversations with them about getting them under a contract to provide the design services, construction plans, and construction management of the projects to take us from Heritage Park to Bowling Park. There's a couple of different phases in there, and I think there's also a couple of opportunities for us to have discussion as, as it relates to that trail and where it's specifically laid out. But I would like to be able to bring back to council at the next meeting, a possible professional services agreement with Atkins to do that work. They've already done a concept plan in that area, they're very familiar with it. In addition, we've kind of got a unique scenario in that on the sewer side, on the sewer side, we're going to be doing our continued work on the, where we just left off with the old ball ground sewer project. We'll continue that sewer capacity expansion in line as it relates to the river. And some of that will be in the area where we're doing the trail design. Atkins did the design plan on the old ball ground sewer, and so there may be the possibility that we can do both projects simultaneously and utilizing the same designs and construction periods and things like that, so that we can, one, move it faster, and, two, really only be paying one engineer to do the design work on both those projects.
Okay. Any comments, questions? That we will be going with this, we can go on this at the next meeting, I would say?
Or as soon as we can get an agreement to.
Okay.
The next meeting may, maybe end of November, but I wanted to let you know the reasoning why I think we should go with Atkins on that front.
Sure. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Next item. Discussion of planning commission meeting and policy and procedures. Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This was a discussed at last city council meeting in regards to proposed ordinance amendment and planning commission, changing their procedures in which they would have two meetings a month, one a work session a month, and follow up with public hearing meeting. There is an amendment in the ordinance that's in your package this time, it was brought up about specific dates and times relative to the work session meeting as well as a public hearing meeting. The ordinance does include dates and times for both of those meetings.
Okay. Any questions? I could throw this in there, but I want to ask another question here. Was there a reason, other than, I say the historic, was there a reason that it wasn't the first and third Tuesday instead of the first Tuesday and third Monday?
Planning commission has normally been meeting on the third Monday of each month for, since well before I came to work with the city. The first Monday is Sunset Crystal Preservation Meeting. That is the reason for having a Tuesday work session meeting and trying to maintain our regular public hearing meeting date on the third Monday.
Have they been pretty satisfied with this play out here? Richard, you have pretty much like the dates here, okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Discussion of personnel manual revision. Ms. Waters?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. What this is concerning is in a lot of the meaningful years, we like to bring our personal policy correct. We removed some laws in there, over some of the changes we've got on this year, so that's how we see what we should be able, but it should have received a red one copy for your initiative. And then we have another possible change to the district that is.
You want to go ahead and talk about?
There's a portion of the personnel manual that deals with, with a list of prohibited activities, one of them bringing weapons to work, but the state law prohibits us from banning employees from having weapons in their cars and parking lots. The current manual says firearms. Mr. Weaver pointed out that the statute says firearms or ammunition or both, so we would change it to include ammunition. And I saw, I suggested a change, which really just more closely tracks the statute itself.
Page forty-three.
Page forty-three of the manual. So that's just bringing us, more clearly complying with the state law.
Okay. And yours is principally removal of the reference to the fire department since we consolidated with the county. Okay. All right, any questions?
Now, really and truly, the big reason for that is, our department was the only twenty-eight, thirty-six employees that we had. And so by removing that, that removes that category of employee hours.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion of the sanitation committee recommendation for a ridge road roll-off site. Mr. McGrew, you ahead on that one?
I do, thank you. We met on September fourteenth, and we were charged with deciding or bringing recommendations to the council about charging residents, accepting trash from non-residents, continuing dumpster days, their frequency, and how this would be paid for. Mr. Yon and Mr. Grant, Mr. Hooper, Huber, and Mr. Ingram were also present with city manager Billy Peppers. You've got the minutes from that meeting in your package. The recommendations that the committee would like to make is make the roll-off site available to city residents only. We'd like to see the days limited of the site to Friday and Saturdays, the hours of seven AM to four PM, to match the hours of work of public works. We'd like to see the roll-off site limited to residents from using box trucks to only Friday, meaning residents could only have box trucks full of trash coming in on Friday. We'd limit residential use on Saturdays to light duty trucks with up to one single axle trailer, no longer than ten feet. We'd like to see removal of all fees for acceptable items. We'd like to only accept appliances containing Freon that are tagged as being Freon-free. To get the certification, a licensed technician would have to go to the resident's home, expel all the Freon from the appliance, and put a regulatory tag on that to say that it was done appropriately. We'd like to continue dumpster days, of course, they're working out really well, and continue them monthly, and also looking at expansion of the program during certain months and holidays to include multiple sites and materials that are accepted. This, expanding the days might coincide with Thanksgiving holidays, any holidays where citizens accumulate a lot of extra trash through gift giving.
Anyone else?
I wanted to say that Mr. Huber did a lot of research for us and found that every municipality or county that is doing any kind of extra trash collection like this, everybody's doing it differently. So there was no one thing to follow. Did you have any additions?
I had a question from Ms. McGrew. You said at the beginning of your report that you were going to report on what you were recommending and how to pay for it. It looks to me like if we're eliminating any charge from outside residents, we're not going to allow them to come in. We're not going to charge our residents because everything we're going to accept is acceptable items only, we're not going to collect any fees. Is that correct or am I misreading this?
I think that's correct, and the reason for the, the committee's recommendation on that, I think primarily was because the roll-off site, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Peppers, is currently being covered by sanitation fees that our taxpayers are paying for, city, so it comes out of those excess funds. And so our taxpayers are already paying for those services, whereas anyone outside the city is not paying for those services. And we really wanted to leverage those services and make it a service for our citizens who are paying, paying the sanitation fund.
I don't disagree with it. The only thing that troubles me a little bit, it seems like every time a discussion of this comes up, is it's costing us this, it's costing us that. It's going to keep costing us, there's no plus side, it's all minus, but I agree with the fact that we shouldn't charge. But sometimes what's happened, two things, is can the gentleman that's working there part-time, is he willing to keep working there for those hours, or is that going to be a problem? Is he going to leave? That's not the end of the world. But the other, the other thing is that we have a large amount of trash, like tomorrow evening will be produced, and it comes from within the city whenever there's a special event, and that always gets charged to the site. So in the future, as council members, we have to look at this as a service to the city. Don't try to say it's costing us sixty thousand a year or whatever, because that's what it's costing us. That's what people pay for with their taxes, and don't come back and say, we got to do something different there because it's costing us. Because we're going down to bare bones here, we don't have any plus side on this equation. So I, I'm just cautioning from the future, because I have listened to this argument since way before I was on council. It's very frustrating, because I want what you have agreed to do. So I'm happy with that, I just don't want it to come back as, wow, it's costing us too much money. Well, that's what we, that's what we agreed to do.
I think we will see pretty good savings when we eliminate the processing we're having to do for the out-of-city residents, because what they pay does not near cover what it costs us to process what they bring in. So I think the savings from that will make it much more palatable cost.
Ferris and I were on a committee a year or two ago, and same kind of thing comes back, but I like what you've done because it takes it to, it takes it to what it should be. It's limits, in some ways, because of the limited hours, it will limit the amount of people that can take advantage of us.
With the limited hours and the limited days, box trucks only be allowed on Friday, that will also curtail a dumping spot for contractors.
I hope, yeah, we hope.
I think it's a really, really good plan here, and I'd like to thank Ms. McGrew and Bill Grant and Mr. Yon as well, and staff that have worked with on it, because in the scope of things, the cost of that roll-off site for our city residents is reasonably negligible compared to the total revenue coming in from our sanitation efforts revenues. So, I mean, to me, I think that it will, it's just another benefit that the city can afford and provide its citizens, and I think it's a, it's a good one, because everybody from time to time has to clean out a basement, or, you know, have some extra garbage or something, and need a place to take it, and that's a good benefit to our citizens. It's good.
I think it's a good plan. I'm living into Friday and Saturday, certainly a little bit, because typically, a lot of times, people have family days or they have their truck. We've been through this since I was on the council for a long time. It's a hard situation to really decide, I think, stopping the other contractors, people that are out of the city should pay for, should not be able to dump on there. It does do one particular thing to the city, it keeps people from dumping out on our streets or land that the people don't know just dump in the trash. It does really save us money in that respect. People don't look at it that way, but it does. Somebody's got to clean that mess up, or we have, etc. But I like the, I like the plan, except I would like to say, after nine days, maybe take a look at it, see if maybe it might, when they add one more day, like, it could be.
It could be ongoing, there, you know, as far as evaluating goes, I would think we wouldn't want to do that anyway, yeah. Russ?
You know, I think the city of Canton, along with waste management, has got an awful lot of bases covered. If you have a problem, a special collection, you can call up waste management and say, I hear my situation, can you come pick it up? And the city of Canton, it just had this experience, cut a whole bunch of bushes down to my yard, and called up, and within, I don't know, I called about four o'clock in the afternoon, the next morning, it's seven-thirty, they were there, to grind it up. A tremendous service to the city residents, and I'm trying to think of a base in terms of people that are knowledgeable of what's out there can't be covered without having to dump it in the street. You know, it's just, it's very frustrating, because we, we will help people if they will only be aware, these are the services that we can find, tell me what your problem is, and here's where you go to get a shake, don't dump it on the street.
We're currently working with waste management on some literature that we can put out in our water bills that lays out their special assistance as it relates to things like that, and that's a perfect opportunity for us to put the information, the new information about the roll-off site in there as well to those city residents.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is you want to make them aware, because the worst thing you can do is have somebody load up their car, their trailer, their truck, come out there on a Wednesday, and the truck is full, and they need the truck for something else, and say, what do I do with it now? We don't want stuff dumped at the gate out there, because they don't have a place to go with it, so. I think that's real, real important to let people know that we change their hours.
Yes.
Mr. Russ, we did discuss moving the gate further towards the street to curtail people from pulling in a little bit and emptying their truck.
Because when you pull in there, the only way you can do is back out, and it's too deep. You're right, that's a good idea.
We did discuss moving that gate to the street.
We've talked about that, and we've also talked about adding a camera down there at public works at that entrance, just to keep up with the ongoing.
Make sure it takes a picture of the back of the truck or whatever, so you can get the license plate. In Georgia, we got nothing on the front, so, yeah. Thank you.
I know we did also discuss, I recall, if I'm not mistaken, that after a ninety-day period or whatever, we would, you know, would review it, or review it on kind of ongoing basis. I think the Friday and Saturday were the most popular days, like our dumpster days, you know, that's when citizens have time to actually do that, and I think, and then the Friday and therefore, you know, residential contractors primarily, or citizens who are remodeling their homes. And so, I mean, I think we could look at that, but I think those were the days it was being used. And I think we also discussed promoting the site to our citizens through water bill or other communications, because there's still a lot of citizens who aren't aware that that site is available and now will be free to them, so.
One thing we'll also do is when individuals come in to pick up a permit downstairs, as it relates to doing building work on their own, we can provide that information to them at the same time, so that if they're doing a remodel themselves in their own home, they know where they can take those materials.
Anyone else? Thank y'all very much. Item, under new business, discussion of annual update capital improvements.
Adam, under new business, discussion of annual update capital improvements plan, five-year short-term works plan, of the comprehensive plan for impact fees. This is what we had to public hearing on earlier. Is there any discussion? Ken, you want to mention anything?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive input from various city departments. The city manager and I sat down and discussed some things. I will note for city council that in the parks recreation capital improvements element, we did add the trail and the park from Edward River Park to, in this, what I just called Old Dawes Park, because that had previously not been in our capital improvements element, so it would not have been available for impact fee monies to go towards that project. We made some changes relative to the police department, based upon their input. And the road projects are basically the same as they were last year. I'm here to answer any questions any of you have.
I have one that you and I had mentioned, and I don't remember exactly when, but when is the, when will we be doing a reevaluation of our impact fee program with regard to the amount that we should be charging under the impact?
Hopefully, I'm going to try to sit down with Mr. Peppers and contact the consultant that we used when we did our methodology and update seven years ago in 2010. It's sort of good practice, try to revisit the methodology a minimum of every five years. We will use some of the administrative impact fee monies that the city holds in regards to working with that consultant, but we hope to get that started very quickly. That will include the working with the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, as well as city council in preparation of the new capital improvements element as it relates to parks, recreation, police, fire, and roads. We are hopeful that the county will consider doing a methodology also, since there was the consolidation of fire this year. And the consultant that the city uses is also the consultant that Cherokee County uses. Not sure if they will do that, since Cherokee County staff indicated they did a new methodology study about two, maybe three years ago. But we do want to work with Cherokee County and the consultant in regards to the fire component.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? That will be on for a possible adoption on the 19th, right?
Yes, sir, for a motion to approve the resolution transmit for state required review.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Next item. This is a discussion, this is a discussion only of the planning commission recommendation cases, E1706, D001 for Travis Neil Holmes Inc., they requested R4 zoning for property located on Knox Bridge Highway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. There was a public hearing that was held in July of this year. The request is by Travis Neil Holmes. They, in the year, are receiving a letter that was submitted to our office last Friday. Planning Commission recommended rezoning the property to R15. The applicant requested R4 zoning. With this letter, the applicant Travis Neil Holmes has stipulated that the maximum number of residential units would be 175, and that the minimum lot size would be 5,000 square feet.
The letter that you just passed out is dated the 29th of September?
That would have been last Friday, I think.
Okay, so. So if you want to go?
Didn't have time to get in council packages, as that was submitted earlier in the week.
Okay, I got you. So they're asking for 175 lots with R4 zoning, maximum of 3.5 units per acre, which is the 175 lots, I guess, and a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet?
Correct. They have stipulated they would accept that the R4 zoning is a minimum 4,000 square foot lot. The planning commission did recommend R15 zoning.
And what about the two entrances?
I thought that the attorney's office had indicated that this would, I'm trying to remember, it seemed like Jeff said it would require two entrances.
Okay. I was kind of under impression that something else was, that they were being denied by the DOT, or was going to provide something at that point. Do you know?
I'll certainly get with the applicant before this comes, before city council again.
But you haven't received anything to that effect?
No. I suspect that that probably would be the case with the limited frontiers that this property contains. GDOT generally does not like to grant two accesses that close together with the same piece of property. But I will get with Mr. Williamson with Travis Neil Holmes and see if we can get something in writing from GDOT relative to entrance and what GDOT would approve.
Okay. Mr. Russ?
And you know a guy named Ed Cochran?
Mr. Cochran is in the audience, and he is a real estate agent involved with this project on behalf of the property owners and...
He wanted to meet with me today, and I didn't see a reason to meet when you're at 5:15, nothing in between. It seemed like that was a big spread. I don't know what there was to talk about, so.
There is another zoning district that is in between. The city has an R10 zoning district, which is a minimum 10,000 square foot lot. And just as was talked about with planning commission, if city council wanted to consider something larger than 5,000 square foot, less than 10,000 square foot, you could certainly approve R4 zoning with something like a minimum 7,500 square foot lot as a condition of approval. There are other options between R15 and R4 that was originally requested. City council could consider.
What would, number of homes would he be able to build on that scenario that you just described on the hit? The 7,500?
I would have to do a calculation, but I would suspect that's probably going to fall somewhere around 120, 125 possibly.
Still have to have two entrances by our ordinance, but DOT isn't going to let them do it. So we'd have to probably defer to the DOT role as opposed to what our role is, I would think. Is that correct?
I mean, you could require that they, you could require that they stub out a second entrance to the property line and dedicate it to the city, even if they're unable to construct it at some point, so that at some point in the future, a neighboring...
So they're prepared for two entrances, but they only have one. That way we'd be somewhat in compliance in the future with us and compliant with the DOT now. Is that correct?
That's an option. John, it's my understanding, it's my understanding that they, the property adjoining is right away to Satterfield Road, which is the road that comes off of Lock Oakdale and goes to the left, and you start up toward the Oakdale Church.
I get you.
And it goes back in there, and there's a possibility that maybe that does, you know, prepare, prepare stub out there as a future second entrance.
That's something that certainly could be looked into. Last time I went towards the end of the Satterfield Road, I thought there was a residential structure between the end of the road and this property line.
It may be. If that's the case, maybe that would work. But you could stub out something at some other part of the development. Yeah.
And, you know, if that residential structure were to go away, or if it's in incorrect location, it's within a right away that is up in Chon on some deeds or plats, that sort of thing, there are several options the city council could consider.
But the way this thing stands right now, that will come before us in two weeks.
Correct.
It's, if that's done, we can't proceed. We, I guess we could proceed, we just have to change our rules, right? I mean, if the planning commission said one thing, we say something different, I guess we can do that, right?
Correct.
But would they, would they agree to 120 homes? That's, I guess, that's something we'd have to do, and then see if they approve it.
If you're leaning towards something of approving an R4 zoning with a condition that says a minimum 7,500 square foot lot, you would have to see if the applicant would accept that for making a final vote, would be my suggestion.
What's the purpose of doing R4 with a conditional 7,500? I mean, it's, we don't have a 7,500, 7.5 zoning, so, but would you, but is there, you're saying that's a way to get it done by saying it's conditional, R4?
Yes.
But it's really 7.5.
That is correct. We do not have that zoning district designation. The R4 zoning district basically was created and suggested the city council to do away with some non-conforming lots in the older portion of the city of Canton that had been non-conforming lots for a number of years.
So the best thing we can do is next two weeks from now, approve the best we can do and see if that's acceptable to them.
That's an option.
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
I think also regardless of the zoning or the right of ways, you know, the ordinance that we passed, 125 homes requires two entrances. I mean, I think, period. Now, if it's 120 homes, that's a different story. But 125 homes, two entrances, and, I mean, I mean, why we would be discussing starting to change that rule on the very first, you know, case that came to us. After that, we had so many issues with this. So I am not in favor of restricting those rules, changing those rules, because it took us so long to get here.
If I might, Councilor Graham, within the amendment to those requirements, there was language that allows any development interest or applicant to plead before city council reasons that they could not provide those two entrances. And that would have to be something that would be considered that I would have to undertake.
I just think it's critical to look at, I don't know, with the planning commission recommendation for the two entrances. And like I said, I mean, you said 120, maybe 125, but if it's 120, I mean, it wouldn't be an issue necessarily. But in addition to the zoning, I think that's, that's something else.
Let me ask a quick question from the attorney. We have another issue coming up tonight regarding adding additional homes into an existing subdivision, additional lots. And it is already beyond the 125. Would they come under, by adding additional lots, would they come under the new two entrance requirement?
I don't know which one. But I think both are the ones that are either the block four or San Heights.
It's, uh...
Yeah, one across San Heights.
San Heights.
They were approved, a certain number of, they have a certain number of lots already approved.
Yeah, but why are they asking for more now then? They're already approved. They were only approved up to 174. They want to go to 178.
So they could build 174 with one entrance?
Yeah, apparently.
But, but...
Because they were under the 199 rule or the 200.
Right, and we approved 174. So I don't think adding four kicks them into two entrances. I'd usually say yes or no. Whether you want to let them out four. I don't think that...
Even though they're adding, they were approved for 174?
You can take the position that we can't do, because you have to, if you want to.
Okay.
We can discuss that when that matter comes up.
Okay, yeah. But I just thought it was kind of timely, because that's what we were talking about at the time.
Mr. Yawn?
Oh, I'm sorry. You have three... No, I'm just saying, I think that, because of my point, that we need to be consistent about this and fair to everyone. If we're going to have that rule, that ordinance, we need to enforce it fairly. But Yawn?
I'm just curious, and I can't remember if it was something in the package the last time. Are we, are they planning to have their entrance, like across the street from the Canton Heights entrance, and make it one intersection?
Yes, yes.
Are we discussing a red light at that intersection in that case?
That would be up to the determination of Georgia Department of Transportation relative to signalization at that intersection. State Route 20 in through that section there, if I'm not mistaken, already has that center lane for turning actions. And I'm not certain that GDOT would require signalizations.
I did have a phone call from GDOT about this project. And at that time, they said that they were happy that the roads were aligned, but there would not be a signal layer. Anyone else here?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
Is this additional subdivision slated to be a cluster community or gated community?
It has not been proposed as a gated community. It would be a standard residential subdivision. It would have an amenity center and a certain number of residential lots based upon what final decision the city is.
Do we know the square footage range of the homes proposed?
I thought that they had spoken in terms of 1,800 square feet. I'd have to go back into the notes of the planning commission.
Will these be zero lot lines?
That depends upon ultimately what city council approves. A zero lot line home is six units to the acre. They are asking for something slightly less than that.
I'm also in agreement with insisting on the two entrances.
David?
I was wondering if they had, if they, if they had the, they have entrances, they're not just the, I know the state's probably denying the two exits. But if they had a gate, it was a gated community, wouldn't that change that something?
The two entrances, you mean?
No, city council expressed that that would not affect the number of entrances. If you recall the Dick Edwards annexations zoning for the apartments.
Well, I think the bottom line is the purpose of the two entrances is public safety. And that is related to the number of people that would be behind it, you know, we had a sort of a cutoff. So I would think it probably wouldn't, actually. Anyone else? I have, I have some questions that if you would see if you could get the answers to by before, in the next, before our next meeting. And I sort of, Ms. McGrew had related one. Would they, I guess, be willing yes or no? I mean, these are simple questions, answering yes or no. And the council obviously can consider some of these answers as they think of this for the next couple of weeks or something. Would they consider a gated community with a master meter serving the water and sewer? Would they consider 2,000 square foot minimum dwelling sizes? You know, we have been about, I've tried to be in the last few years, more about quality than quantity. And that's sort of what we would like, like to try to see in the future too. So would they consider four-sided masonry structures, or maybe 75% of the structure being masonry? Would they consider an 8,000 or 7,500 square foot lot, as opposed to what's been proposed at five? Would they consider a variable arrangement of garages that would be attached on them? In other words, some would be rear entry garages, some would be maybe front, and then some would be maybe set back from the front facade of the house, 10 or 15 feet or whatever it would take to give a little... to give a little different appearance there and design. And of course, the other one was the possibility of a stubble was the one for the road as opposed if if you can't if you can't do two entrances, would they consider doing a stubble out? And of course, you know, two entrances, of course, is preferred. That's the questions I have. Anybody else have any?
But I just a couple of comments. One, I think, you know, the sort of I totally agree with the quality over quantity. I mean, I do think there is a need for high-quality affordable housing for, you know, for starter homes and for millennials. I mean, I think we talked about that before, and and if we could achieve that through, you know, design, conditions, design process, I I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing as long as it, you know, agrees with our other ordinances on entrances and all. But also I think that, you know, that we we come back to South Canton quite often in that area. And I know we've had discussions, this is more long-term, but it's related about, you know, master planning for South Canton. And I'm just lucky to stay to bring up the subject that if we had that or had that process in place, it could inform developments like this in this area. Otherwise, we're going to kind of be looking at project, you know, one-offs each time. But if we had, for instance, you know, an L C I initiative there or, you know, walkability or connectability for that area, I think it would be a little bit easier to consider these cases and how well they fit into that plan versus, you know, just one-off projects solo. And I think it would help us and I think it would help developers, so I just wanted to kind of bring that up so for for future consideration.
I think we do need to expand that project up there and study.
One thing you might also want to consider if you do approve the smaller lot sizes would be a restriction on parking on the street up front. You know, we get we get lots of questions from those neighborhoods in that particular section of the city where there's not a lot of parking in the drive driveway and people park on the street. And they ask us to come back in and put up no parking signs and things like that, and that's a very difficult position. If you are going to have a smaller home, a smaller lot, and you might have people who might have three or four cars, it would be a lot easier on the front end to say no parking on the streets or parking only on one side of the street up front.
Let me ask then, City Attorney, can the city require covenants be provided for a subdivision? And those covenants be approved by the city without?
Sure.
As a condition?
That can be a condition of zoning.
Okay.
The covenants be provided. I mean, you I think you want to say what you're looking for.
Right. Well, I mean, for instance, just like maybe a covenant that be no parking on the street, covenants, can you could you have covenants that you have no rental units in some areas?
Right, yes. And what I meant was, instead of just saying, we want to approve your covenants, but without giving, you don't care about a lot of other things that are covenants.
Right, sure. Most I think would.
Have a reason for it.
Right, okay. Anyone else? Okay, so this will come up at our two weeks from tonight. Okay.
I'll try to get these questions answered as quickly as possible and hopefully have the responses within the package that go out to city council one week in advance of the meeting.
Thank you, Ken, very much. Okay, next item, discussion of planning commission recommendation, case Z C A seventeen oh eight dash zero zero one for the same board group proposed amendment to condition number two associated with Canton Heights subdivision, okay, along Oxbridge Highway. Pat?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a zoning condition amendment request specifically for condition number two from case zero four oh seven. They are requesting approval to increase the number of residential units from one hundred seventy-four to one hundred seventy-eight. Planning commission did recommend approval of this after conducting a public hearing on September the eighteenth. Would note from mayor and council that the original zoning with this piece of property of what is now known as Canton Heights subdivision, the original approval was for one hundred seventy-seven residential units. The property was then rezoned to something slightly different and a decrease from the original one hundred seventy-seven residential units down to what is currently in place at one hundred seventy-four. The applicant is requesting to increase to one hundred seventy-eight.
Okay, now, the 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 number approved was one seventy-four?
In the.
I mean, which was it, one seventy-seven or one seventy-four?
There were two zoning actions previously to what is before city council tonight with this piece of property. The original zoning for this property had a maximum number of residential units of one hundred seventy-seven.
Okay, so we and and then.
I think that was done in two thousand and one or two thousand and two. Then the zoning was changed from the original with another zoning action in two thousand and four. And in two thousand and four, the number of units was reduced from the original approval for one seventy-seven to one seventy-four.
Why would you rezone a piece of property for three houses, do you think?
Part of this had to do with separation and getting some detached units into this development instead of it being attached units.
Okay, Mr. Russ?
They they are all detached right now, right?
Correct.
And they want the extra floor detached also, right?
Correct.
Phase three is where these four homes are going to go?
Yes, in the very back.
Where where's the street going to go into it? Is that the the far end of that phase three?
Sorry.
The street that will go into phase four is not in there yet, but where?
It's not a phase four.
Phase three, I'm sorry.
It comes out of phase two.
No, I know, wait, yeah. Here's the reason. I I was in there four years ago. I haven't been back for a long time, but the streets were in bad shape. Do we own those streets? Has that ever been top coated or are we going to deal with another street problem?
Those are private streets.
I believe those are private streets, best of my recollection.
They've never come to us asking us to take them over?
No, I do not think so. Best of my recollection, the recorded flats reflect that those are private streets.
Is this a different developer than who started this one?
Yes.
Could we make a condition that they finish the streets? We don't want to ever come back and have to retop those streets.
You can certainly try to get them to do that, whether they would accept that condition, that would entirely be upon them.
Yeah, I don't know if they're tapped, but maybe we need that would be an interesting thing to note because I I really hate to think about topping those whole streets just because we approved four more homes.
I will check that and provide that answer prior to the next meeting.
Thank you.
And make those four lots expensive, would it?
Yes, sir, it would.
I suspect.
And it was it was a big complaint by the people because it was a bankruptcy. Every single house I went to a doctor, they were complaining about the streets. It was a big problem, big, big problem. Thank you.
Any any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, next item. Discussion of the planning commission recommendation, M P seventeen oh eight dash zero zero one for Lennar, Georgia Inc., proposed master plan amendment to establish residential development standards within the bluffs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a master plan amendment in regards to bluffs. Their existing conditions of approval on a tractor pod basis have established setbacks that really were more geared towards office, retail, light industrial type development and really did not address residential standards such as residential setbacks and lovitz and things of that nature. The applicant did recommend some setbacks as well as lovitz. And this was presented before planning commission. Planning commission recommended approval to establish these residential standards.
What would be the setback or is there in here from the buffer around the reservoir?
That is already established within the reservoir master plan.
The setback from the buffer?
There is a I think the rear setbacks are proposed as is it twenty feet or fifteen, which would be good ways away from the reservoir buffer. There's going to be open space, common open space.
Now, is this our standards or whose whose standards are those now?
The residential setback standards.
Yeah.
That are proposed. They were proposed by the applicant developer. They're consistent with residential setback standards that have been established at Town Mill, Summer Wall, Park Village, Laurel Canyon, Great Sky.
Okay, but so but those aren't adjoining, well, some of them are, same same standards as those lots, other lots adjoining the reservoir.
Some, yes, sir.
I imagine, you know, there's going to be a there's going to be a major task, soil erosion control, and they start to top of those hills and peninsulas, so, you know, that's something that really is going to have to that's an inspection aspect, not a.
Yes, sir.
It is most of it is twenty, there's one pod is fifteen. I'm confirming whether that even is in relation to the buffer. I don't think it would. There's a twenty-foot rear along the lots.
But you're not sure whether that's off the buffer or not, or?
No, that would be.
Off the lot?
The rear building.
There's the lot that join the buffer. It does, right? And or does it go in? Do we own the buffer or is it it's an easement?
It is an easement that is established around the pool of water for the reservoir.
So these lots will go into the buffer?
No, these lots will have common open space between the back of the individually owned residential lots and the buffer zone.
I think they're treating the buffer as a boundary.
Yeah. They're they're. Outside the buffer, and in fact, most of the lots have a lot of additional buffer beyond the buffer.
Okay, okay.
A lot that you have to set.
That's what I was.
There's common open space adjacent to or between the individually proposed residential lots and the buffer zone for the reservoir.
Okay. Anyone have you, Mr. Russ?
About thirteen years ago, when I first moved here, I took a friend up to the bluffs and told him this was the future of Canton. I think the future of Canton was not seven hundred homes up there. And I think T P A originally wanted to put class A office space there. There's an article in the recent newspaper where Buzz Arons was quoted as saying, if this project goes forward and we approve it, the class A office space that was originally designed for that location is dead. He used dead, but the bottom line is it is never going to happen now. If T P A had the right to do this from the very beginning, although that was never their intent, they had the right to do it. Lennar bought that right, so we can't really stop them from doing this. Is that probably correct?
That is correct. The existing conditions, zoning.
Go with the ownership and we cannot stop. All we can do is control maybe how they address their right in some way. Yeah, so that's all we're talking about.
Approximately one hundred fifty acres of bluff development that is still there for office, technology, light industrial, to the tune of approximately three million, three hundred thousand square feet.
But it it wasn't the original intent of this project for sure.
But there was going to be some residential.
Not to this.
Always contemplated the original condition of approval specified, seven hundred residential units.
They're not. I don't think they're increasing the number of allowed units.
They're not increasing whether units. They are transferring the number of units within their geographic boundaries, which the existing conditions allow them to do.
They could have built apartments.
No, I I I'm.
Correct.
As conditional use, however.
Yeah, I just.
Well, not well, yeah, they had to come back, but I mean, the original zoning didn't specify what kind of housing. It was just seven hundred some number of residential.
So the hundred fifty residential units maximum number.
When we come to vote for this in two weeks, there's not a whole lot we can do to stop it. Kind of, is that true?
You brought to.
I'm just saying.
This one, you could deny this one, and then you have no setbacks at all. That's what they're putting in place. They're putting in place the setbacks that you have in other places that don't exist in the bluffs. We could have contemplated only setbacks for business commercially.
So we're getting we get the best of worlds in front of us right now, is that what you're saying, sort of?
If they're going to build houses, we got to have some rules. They're they're proposing the rules.
And I and I would just mention too that procedurally, when it comes up in two weeks, you probably should vote on the conditional use first and then vote on this matter second, because if you should decide not to approve the conditional use, then that might change the setbacks as it relates to townhomes and single family.
That one pod.
Yeah, plus a minimum lot size, I mean.
I'm not sure if there is a specified minimum.
Is that not would that not be in these standards that we approve? Or why don't we put the standards in if that's not part of it?
I mean, it's it's building standards, not that the original zoning had no rules about residential. It just said seven hundred fifty residential units, nothing, no setbacks, no lot size, nothing. They're not asking for lot size regulation, and I don't know that you can pull one in on them now. They're asking for setbacks in terms of building regulation, I think is the way to look at it. Fair to say?
Yes, that is part of it. As far as.
If you extended the setback requirements beyond what might be reasonable, that'd have an effect, wouldn't it, on the on the lot size?
You made about a hundred-foot setback, sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That'd have something to do with the lot size. So I just wondered what the minimum lot size is in this.
I would tend to think that the minimum lot size that that is proposed would probably be somewhere in that five thousand, seventy-five hundred square foot range. I do know that there are some lots that are pushing two acres on that portion that is adjacent to the reservoir. Some of the smaller lots will probably be on the east side of Bluffs Parkway. The townhome lots, which are attached units, proposed to have thirty-four foot wide lots. The single-family detached residential lots are going to be, for the most part, sixty and seventy-foot width lots.
Mr. Ross, you had you had something there.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the the pod layout, you know, almost forty percent of the site is green space outside of lots. So I don't want to focus too much on lot size. Because if you look at like Pod C, which is basically a spine street, the lot sizes are potentially pulled in close to the street, so you're not grading as much as you're concerned about grading, you know, getting close to the reservoir. But the lot sizes on average are, I mean, they range from about six thousand square feet to over nine thousand square feet. But again, beyond the lots is significant green space outside of the lots, and that's intentional. So that they're buying into, you know, the natural setting that you have being up in those that green space is well beyond the seventy-five-foot buffer.
I know you the next item has to do with the multifamily, and these are fee simple townhomes, right?
That is correct.
Which do you anticipate constructing or developing, constructing first, a single family or a multifamily?
Let let me say.
We're looking at ourselves right now. I hope you know that.
Yeah, let me say that I would call would call these directly townhomes.
Okay.
They're attached homes. And the reason why I say that is these are thirty thirty-five plus wide property. And they're twenty-four hundred square feet in size. So really what they are is attached homes. And it's very intentional to take advantage of the market need. And what they've done in their market studies is a lot of the buyers are going to be older buyers, a lot of them will be single holder buyers. And having the attached product, having to maintain yard is important for them. So this is not a something to throw in at the end. The townhomes, the attached product will be built first. They will have that first in the first phase. And and the other element to it is having multiple product types. You don't mean this was entitled for seven hundred fifty homes? You don't, I mean, this was entitled for seven hundred fifty homes. We're proposing basically six, I think, six, nine, eight. You wouldn't wanna build one type. You wanna have multiple types, and that's what this does. It gives a different product type in there. This would not be something that people would be surprised at the end and say, oh, wow.
Well, you understand what I was asking.
Oh, exactly. This is critical.
It's better to have that up front and have the single family come into it, and have the single family there next coming.
I mean, this is the buyer who wants the security and safety and manage, maintain yards and all that that you have, and it is, and it's not a typical townhome that is real, you know, typical townhome you think of is real narrow. This is a wide, this is basically their single-family detached product that they're connecting to take, you know, for this specific project.
That's great. Just happy to hear that they are planning to do the detached first, but can we make that a condition of approval? I mean, just to make sure that it's official or?
They're gonna do detached and detached at, at the beginning.
Simultaneously or, or detached first or, at the minimum simultaneously?
It was my understanding, Councilor Grant, in the initial discussion with Lennar Corporation, that they would do construction, put streets in, infrastructure in relative to the pod with the townhome, plus the single-family detached portion that would be adjacent in north of townhome pod, because there are some interconnecting streets within that, and that they would have single-family detached home product as well as townhome product coming on the market at the same time. They have indicated that all of this residential component will have a homeowner fee that will take care of all maintenance for all yards, all single-family detached, as well as the single-family detached.
Mr. Tom, sorry. Again, I was, I'd be, again, that sounds great, but without a condition in there, could they, if we approve, decide not to do detached first? That's my question, is sort of, the intent is great, and I just wanna make sure the intent is...
We, we, we will come up with a condition that, that, I just, I mean, it's great that we've got some time between now and the voting meeting. I'll sit down with my partner, come up with a condition.
I think that'd be great, just to, just to reassure the other council. Mr. McGee?
Thank you. Are the attached townhomes one-story, two-story, three-story?
They're two stories, but they have a master on name. I don't know of everyone, but I've forgotten, a lot of them have a master on name. Again, it's taken advantage of that, that is why we're being this.
Thank you.
What, what is the, Mr. Huff, what is the projected build-out time on that? I know it depends on the market to some degree, but, you know, some of these developers can build those things pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean.
Three years, do you think?
Probably three, five years.
Three, five, okay.
If I, if I could make a comment too to council, one of the things you might wanna consider, given that we have had what I'll consider neighborhoods built in the past, one of the things you might also wanna consider is requiring that the streets be top coated. As you know, we have in the past had the standard where we haven't asked them to be top coated up front, and then something happens with the economy and we end up with failures in the base and things like that, we may want to consider making that a condition as well.
And, yeah, I totally agree with that, and if, if we haven't done so, then we need to initiate and put that into our development regulations requirement.
That it's top coated up front?
Yeah, you don't get your final plat unless it's finished. That's our.
It, it's not specified, just as the city policy about not putting the top coat on was never in development regulations with the city of Canton. It's sort of been, and we have encouraged development over the last year and a half, two years, to go ahead and install that final or finish top coat at the time that they do the street construction with GAB and the binder course. All of that is engineered together to make a stronger street that will withstand the traffic and the construction traffic.
Don't we, I mean, doesn't our ordinance provide the ability to do a bond instead of finishing them, which means when you require them to be finished? I'll look at it again, but I, I thought that, I thought you purposely did that.
I, I think we're better off to not go the bonding process and just make a.
I just brought that up to prove what I thought was true, which is, we require, they don't get the final plat unless they finish the streets.
Which in my opinion, we should never give a CO, I mean, build or you want to.
They even haven't had the final plat. They can't even start doing anything unless you finish the street, and I think that's what it says.
That's what it says, that's what we're gonna do. I mean, until the street is finished, and then, and then they post a maintenance bond.
Right. I'm not sure, I think it says that, but if not, we need to.
If it doesn't, needs to.
Bobby, I think one of the things, and Ken, we talked about this, is that the purpose of waiting on the top coat is of wear and tear on the streets during the construction process, and you may have the opinion, I don't wanna, quote you, that if you do top coat it, it actually helps compact it, so it's not terrible to finish the streets out before the construction project is complete. Is fair to say?
That is correct. If you think in terms of engineering and design, our street standards are designed for maximum wear and capacity based upon the full street geometric and design with eight inches of GAB, two inches of binder, inch and a half of finished top coating. The binder and top coating together gives you three and a half inches of asphalted concrete to absorb the wear and tear of construction traffic and everything else. Cherokee County does not require the finished top coat to come after the fact. I've worked in the private sector with a development company for nine years. We always finished our streets and did the maintenance bonds for that maintenance period. We never had problems in regards to our streets. If there is an issue, it's much easier to mill down that final top coat than it is having to go in and do work on a binder course when you have exposed lids with the manholes and that sort of thing before doing a finished top.
I have a question for Mr. Huff. You know, we sit here in two thousand seventeen, making decisions about what this area is gonna look like in two thousand twenty-two or whenever you finish it out, but here's my question. By my calculations, we may have two thousand Canton residents living in this area when you finish out this project. And we are, by independent vote, one of the best places to live in the state of Georgia. Will this be one of the best places to live within that city when we finish? And will you make us as a council proud for what we're gonna decide to do when this thing finishes? And I want that in black.
I greatly appreciate that. I, I've, I've worked with Lennar on their project, and we've worked with the engineers in coming to lay out. I mean, I think the critical components are having multiple products. It works great with the different peninsulas, and on the reservoir can, can have different, slightly different product types, and that'll help the community be viable, you know, as a whole. And also, we're gonna have a very active amenity package. They're looking at, you know, having all the elements connected together so that they can get easily from one stuff, one to the other, and so I think it's gonna be a great community.
I unfortunately have a, a bad experience with them, not personally, but close to. I see this all the time. They walked away from a project. It was a very, very active project, and they just walked away, and it never made quite any sense to me. I guess the one thing, we gotta make it good enough for them to stick to the finish, 'cause we wanna, if they're gonna start, they're gonna finish, 'cause having another developer come in gets real complicated. I'm watching that process right now, and Lennar was the only one that abandoned the project. There's four or five other pillars, major pillars, and Lennar walked away. Can't figure it out. In fact, I went to one of those houses recently, and there was nobody there. It was an empty house, had been empty for like two years, and, and they just walk away. I, I, I don't know why, 'cause I can't talk to anybody to find out why.
Well, I, I can get someone.
I can give you, I can give you the exact location of that place.
We will get someone to talk to you.
No, no, yeah, yeah, I, I just, look, it's a big project, and don't walk away from us, please. Stay with us. If you're, if you're gonna do something, great, finish it, please.
They have every intention to do that.
Thank you, yeah.
My experience, I've worked with it for many years, I've not had that experience with.
Well, I might be elite, I don't understand why, I truly don't, 'cause it makes sense. Everything around them was doing great, why they walked away, I have no idea. I'd like to know.
Anyone else have, Mr. McGee?
Thank you. Will there be reservoir access anywhere on the property?
The reservoir plan has only a couple of designated access points, so there won't be, we won't, unless something changes, there not be an ability to get another reservoir accessible.
Because Canton only has permission or authorization for two access points, right?
Two docks, two boat ramps, and we currently have two boat ramps and one dock.
So, we only have one more?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, technically, it doesn't define what a dock is, so if we wanted to build twelve miles of shoreline, a dock, that would, that would meet the definition.
Let's just not go there. Okay, so this community will not be coming from their backyards into the reservoir?
We won't have any, we don't, I mean, the, the reservoir plan has very detailed restrictions.
Not in the municipal plan, I'm sure.
That's correct. And I can't say someone's not gonna walk to the reservoir.
Oh, sure. Great Sky walks to the reservoir. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Huff.
Thank you.
And we want that in black again. Thank you.
Okay, next item, discussion of Planning Commission recommendation, KCU seventeen oh eight, seventy oh one, of Lennar, proposed conditional use approval to build townhouses within the Bluffs, and that probably poses a hundred and ninety-eight townhomes there, these, these simple townhomes.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, a public hearing was held on September the eighteenth in regard to conditional use permit approval for the pod with one hundred and ninety-eight proposed townhomes. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use permit to allow them to move forward with the fee simple townhome project.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that? I think we kinda hashed that out already, but, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Next item, discussion of possible action resolution for pre-application funding for the Water Conservation Fund. This is something to mention earlier. There is a time, time constraints on making the application for some recreation money, so.
It's basically a hundred thousand dollar grant program, maximum round of a hundred thousand dollars. Hage James would put the application together, utilizing the Trail Project Edwah River Eastward, and it's gotta be submitted by the end of the month, and so with council, it's okay on request that you approve the resolution tonight so that we can make the application.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rust made a motion.
Well, we, we can still discuss.
Yeah.
We're not sure. She got the names first. Any, any other questions or discussions, go to that, Mr. Grant.
Yes, on the hundred thousand dollars on, on the grant, if awarded, does that go toward construction? It can't go toward the design or, what are the allowances for that one hundred thousand dollars?
I believe it's just the construction side of it, and it's a reimbursement grant, and so what we would do is we would front the money and then reimburse ourselves for that, that portion of it.
Front your money for what, though?
For the construction of the trails.
Actual construction?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But not, not for design?
No, not for design. But, but the design work can count towards some of the local match. Does that make sense?
Got, got you, yeah.
I wanted to ask, what is our matching obligation?
I believe it's twenty, twenty cents.
I believe that's twenty, I don't know.
I'm sorry, it's fifty percent, a minimum of that. They require grant recipients to provide at least fifty percent in matching funds for each selected project, a twenty-five thousand dollar grant minimum from them, a hundred thousand dollar grant maximum for them. And, you know, just based on initial estimates, it's probably gonna cost a million dollars to do the trail out that way. Statute won't be a problem with that one.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, do we have, we have a motion in a second to approve the pre-application funding for the Water Conservation Fund grant. If not, all those in favor signify and say aye. Those no, all members voting for the motion. Next item, I'm G, discussion, discussion of the water and sewer tap fees associated with Canton Exchange.
As, as you know, across from Canton Marketplace on Highway twenty, there is a development that's currently under construction, Canton Exchange. It's a commercial development. It's located inside, outside of the city limits and incorporated Cherokee County. The applicant has, the developer has asked to look at possibility of annexing into the city, and one of the things that they had requested as part of that was to look at possibility of, of working with them on their water and sewer tap fees. We discussed a couple of different options, and, and there's a letter for you in here that, that kinda laid out a process for maybe the creation of a business improvement district. I think after they reviewed it with their attorneys, they decided that was not the option that they could take. Currently, there's, there's roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand some odd dollars that are associated with a water and sewer tap fee with this project. I would just mention to council that we currently, on the books, have a water and sewer tap reduction in the area of Riverstone for projects that are developed in Riverstone that's roughly thirty percent. And so, we do already have a standard out there as it relates to commercial development for the reduction of fees.
But is that, is that because they put money into a certain part of the development of that project, and they're essentially being reimbursed?
I couldn't tell you that. I just know on the books that anybody that comes in gets a reduction in that Riverstone development area, that Riverstone master plan area, thirty percent of that.
What is the, what's the projected annual property tax from this? How many acres are we talking about here, coming in?
Not sure on the acreage. Skylar Long is here with a project, he can give us a little more information on that. We ran the, we ran the numbers, and basically off of about, I believe it was about forty million dollars worth of assessed value on the project, it brings in roughly seventy-five hundred dollars per mil.
Post fifty a year.
So, around fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes. Now, one thing that, one thing that, that I try to think about as it relates to this project, there's been lots of discussions around the state for many years about part of the revenue moving forward with a point-of-sale system as it relates to the calculation of sales tax. And, you know, if the project were in the city and if the state did move forward with point-of-sales, it would more accurately define what sales tax is coming out of the city limits. The project's going to be coming anyways, and there's kind of a natural barrier to city growth on that side of twenty as it relates to Brook Park, which runs from twenty all the way to the river.
So, you say the, the, at Riverstone, it's thirty percent?
It's thirty percent of Riverstone.
What is point, what does point-of-sale mean? Does that mean that we're gonna get a rebate or something as a city from that point-of-sale within our city?
Right now, what happened to a sales tax is it, is it's, is it's brought in by the state, they send it back to the county of origin, basically, and then the county individually rations out those percentages based on population. If the state ever went to a point-of-sale system, the tax collected would be remitted to the jurisdiction where the tax was actually collected. So, if you've got the commercial inside the city limits with a point-of-sale system, then those taxes come back to us directly, not based on population, but based on the location of the tax. And as you know, Canton Marketplace, Riverstone, for example, get lots of consumers from outside the city limits that purchase there.
I, I watched that point-of-sale work pretty well. Community about thirty thousand people, had twenty-two car dealerships. One percent of all the sales tax went back to that community, generated about four to six million dollars a year. So, it's pretty. So a pretty powerful thing. What's the likelihood that we will have point of sale versus, which is basically what SPOS does, is collects and distributes? But if we don't point of sale, what's, what's the likelihood that the state will propose something like that as opposed to SPOS?
Been working on it for several years. The G, the municipal associations tried to get this done for a number of years, and the state continually claims that they don't have the capability of, of doing that. I don't, I don't know why, but.
You got computers, trust me, they can do it.
They can do that.
Yeah, there's no way that they can't do it.
See, even if, John, if you, even if we knew where, we tend to believe that, that we have a concentration of, obviously, of commercial studies, that it gives, it would give us knowing that and, and being able to show how much more retail sales come from our city would put us in a much better negotiation, negotiating position with the county when we're talking about dividing up the new SPOS or, or other things and what that.
And in addition, you know, the, the whole, the whole idea behind annexation too is, especially on Highway twenty, if we're only on one side of the road, it really cuts back our ability to serve from a public safety standpoint if an accident happens in the roadway. And so being on both sides of the road puts that in our jurisdiction at that point.
I think we have to make a decision based on the laws and the facts we have in front of us because we're about to pass another SPOS, which means make six, seven years more, that that probably won't go away. So we have to decide, is this good for us right now under the current SPOS conditions? Point of sale doesn't mean anything until it becomes a fact.
I would just say that it's a lot harder to annex something in when it's open and operating than it would be to have it.
Oh, trust me, I, I don't disagree with the annexation idea, but the annexation has to make sense right now for us and we have to decide. But I agree, once it builds up, it becomes harder to annex.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you. Two questions, if we did decide to annex, I mean, I agree, you know, having both sides of the road would be a good thing, but we still, Racetrack, Verizon, AT&T, that's all still, would still be in the county at, at that point? Would that cause any issues as you see?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't create an island, but, you know, as behind all of that is the new parkland that we have, the forty-five acres, and so it might encourage that area between Brook Park, governors walk back to that new parkland to eventually come in as well.
And the other thing, just on the economics, if I understand this correctly, you're saying that potential revenue for water and sewer tap fees were around four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? And the potential, you know, estimated taxes that we would receive would be roughly fifty thousand dollars a year? If we applied the same standards, we're somewhere thirty percent, get around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand? So in that estimation, if this correct, you just check my math here. We would be, we'd break even in, in less than three years, and then the rest would be revenue that the city would get versus the county.
When we originally started talking, I think our, at least my mindset was, if the city was going to have an incentive to give out, we would want to be able to recoup that incentive within a five-year period. So whether it's thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, whatever it is, I don't think we want to give away an incentive that takes us longer than five years to recoup.
I agree, so, but, but is that math correct? That's around three years, if it was thirty percent?
Yes.
Okay, taken.
Mr. McGee?
If Racetrack, Verizon, and AT&T are in the county, how would we annex those?
I think we just have to deal with each one of them individually, each property owner individually, and see what incentive we could put out there to, to bring them in, you know?
We can't, can we go and say, we cannot?
We can't make them. I'm on, sure, we can go talk them into it.
Right, I know we cannot annex anyone against their will.
Mr. McGee?
Did you have some kind of rundown, just a few of the still, if you're going to answer?
Sure, absolutely, so this, this project, Sally Long, my land, I can handle the proceeds. And it's probably for last year or so. With Billy and Nick Jack, and I think you're the other guys, they're all good. Dave Ken, they've been several times over the last few years. Can I make sure we have all our facts and figures squared here when we help you get back to the bigger city? Right now, we're, we're in three phases. Phase one is the center of the perimeter construction on Highway twenty. That's about thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. In that center, there's three restaurants. There's a WNS for the drive-through, a Topless City Cafe, and a Duke's Eatery. Duke's, if you're not familiar with it, is kind of like a McAllister's, an air grade combination. They do a lot of soup, sandwiches, pizzas, it's a downtown restaurant. Also, that space, there's a Sprint cell phone store, a little Woodstock mattress that's currently slated. That project's probably seventy-five, eighty-five percent complete. Most of our tenants there will be open in the next thirty to sixty days. In phase one, we have the new signal that's on the highway twenty there. Actually, us and the all of our, the whole control system trap from twenty is, is much needed right now. We've already paid for the tap fees for that section, so we get all of your stuff here as soon as they open. While we're at it, so. Phase two, which is a back section, which is currently under construction now. All our permits from Cherokee County are pretty much finalized, so we have some construction, herbal, you know, you can see it there. There are seven main acre tenants in that one. Sorry, from left to right, you have a pet supermarket, Dollar Tree, Planet Fitness, Home Goods, which is a TJ Maxx company, Hobby Lobby is the main tenant, acre territory, that was for the Party City, and then Tuesday Morning is only in town. So that, that phase is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet total. It's, it's all about starting at the same time. Phase three is kind of the remnants of, there's a small shop space that's going to be with that, as well as another eight thousand square foot center that's going to be up on Highway twenty. That we've kind of finalized in phase one out, those are a little further out. So we've got some tenants already lined up for those, for all that spaces. And if that space builds up, once you get started, we'll, we'll show you.
Mr. McGee?
Thank you. I'm, I'm not familiar with pet supermarket. Can you tell me what?
Uh, that's smart.
They do not do retail sale of dogs and cats. I already checked that.
Because you're in the county now, and the city has the ordinance. So I wanted to make sure that that was aware, they were aware that they would be selling of these.
I believe there is one in Woodstock, a pet supermarket.
I believe there is. I believe they do sponsor adoption.
Good, awesome. They don't sell kittens either, right? Okay.
Anyone else have a question there? Well, I think, I think we have to decide whether that we want to be consistent with Riverstone or do something else there. I think that is, is a decision that has to be made between now and then. You had something?
Yeah, someone told me about that project years ago, and the concept or vision was something like an avenues. Are these pods going to be tied together in any kind of green space or something that kind of emulates the, the avenue type?
Not so much like green space, park space. Most of the pod spaces do have restaurants with alcohol patios and dining areas on them as they come online. But smaller is like, I'm thinking about like avenues over in Forsyth County. They have a big centralized park over there, and we don't have that name right now. Driftily, size-wise, we're kind of like between two elements, Highway twenty there, it's residential property on the back, so, kind of, I would maybe do it.
Yeah, I never quite saw where the space was available to do that, but that's the concept I'm going to have in mind.
I would like to point out too, just the jobs intact of, of a center of this size. Between all three phases of this, of this project, you're talking about pushing a hundred and thirty-five full-time positions. You create about these retailers that almost deliver a hundred and eighty part-time positions. A lot of times on that retail, I guess they will look, you're talking about, it's all development, it's always brought up in a factory. Just the Hobby Lobby center alone, a lot of this is more sheer job information. The Hobby Lobby is very proud of what they're giving you there. Five to six management employees that are all high five, that look six figures, thirty full-time employees, they're low to small time employees, and only sixty dollars an hour. They have another fifteen to twenty part-time employees that are, you know, all sort of reimbursed very well. So there's, there's good jobs that are tied in with this. It's not, a lot of times they get retail, retail development, it just gets talked about as, as kind of part-time labor. There, there's a lot of full-time, low-paid jobs that are created with this.
Is Hobby Lobby going to be the biggest footprint there?
Hobby Lobby is the biggest footprint there, fifty-five thousand square feet. Their next largest is Home Goods, they're about twenty-two, twenty-five, somewhere near there. They do have, we do have a plant fitness section in, which is a similar size. Kind of adds a more of a life experience there, especially the retail in the center, it's a good, it's a good trip for the center.
TJ Maxx is not coming over from the other side because they're, they're kind of sometimes partner up with Home Goods?
TJ Maxx and Home Goods are actually the same company.
But I mean, sometimes you have one side, Home Goods, no, they're not going to do that.
All of these, except for, I think, Dollar Tree over in the U.S. area. The Riverstone area is pretty much full right now, but you got a little bit. So these retailers, they get the size they need, there's just not space for them in that corridor. So it's Highway twenty is expanding, and there are, I think, six lanes there, you're going to increase number of trips coming in from Forsyth County in this way, you know, Eastern Park, Cherokee as well. And all the trips are getting ready to the hospital, it's just a, it's a fast-growing area, it's, you know, they're, they're fourteen, I don't know. I think I talked a little bit about, I think, if your twenty, thirty plan, I looked at with the future growth of our trees, and we're a little bit at, you know, the offshoots are working, I think, kind of makes a little what you consider here.
Yeah, anyone else? Thank you, we'll, we'll have to, I guess, consider this over the next couple of weeks and, and make a decision.
Sure. Is there any kind of methodology behind the, the five-year timeline that you referred to in terms of outlook? Because this type of center is going to be around for at least ten to fifteen years based on the initial terms of leases, much less option periods. I can't even think of a Hobby Lobby that's closed, so you're looking at at least a thirty-year impact. Just curious.
I can think of one Hobby Lobby that moved, that was down on Highway ninety-two and moved to Cobb County. But, no, I mean, I think, I think from the beginning, we've looked at the five-year period because, you know, as it relates to at least water and sewer, we've also got a lot of high growth that comes in. And so we've got, we've got things that we have to pay for as well. And typically, those tap fees are what we utilize for that additional capacity and growth. And so, you know, you don't want to leverage the, leverage the farm forever, you know? So five years was kind of the, the point mark for us.
Well, I will say, some of the feedback we received, because obviously we're, we're tied in with this since then, it's long-term too, is, you know, it's kind of good, but, but long-term for them as well, because you were talking about lifetime of property taxes here. So in order for it to make sense and beneficial for everybody, we should just make sure that what's appropriate.
Yeah, I think there's an issue of fairness because if we do it for you, we kind of have to treat somebody else the same way.
Sure.
We have to have a limit to the amount of time we expect to get that to be even. And if we went on five years, for example, for five years, we're going to be without funds from that particular project, and we're funding it ourselves, so it's taxes. Somebody has to pay those taxes in the meantime. The bigger we get, the more we're going to ask, be asked. So I think we're just trying to be fair.
Sure.
Let me ask one other question. I'm assuming that you would not be coming in to the city prior to the construction of that phase two, or would you come in?
Phase, phase two's started construction, I mean, like Monday morning. So when we, when we first started talking with annexation, it really.
So you're in really no hurry on that then, right?
What's that?
Well, I.
Except for the water.
I don't have to have water. I think the way I look at it is, you know, they're constructing the shell of the building. So if, if it's a ninety-day period for annexation, basically, and we could agree to terms on the water and sewer tap, while we may not get the building permits on the shell, we would get the building permits possibly on the, on the interior build-out if annexation took place in.
And then, not only would it do out some of the remainder of the pot space there, some would tend to do out.
So even, even though they may not have that construction complete, and they were annexed in, our building department would not be doing the inspections of the buildings, nor would they be under the code requirements of the city?
I don't think we would do any of the inspections unless the permits were pulled with us.
Even though they're in the city?
Yes, on this, yes. I don't think there would be a handover of the, of the inspection process during the construction.
Okay. Anyone else have a question? Thank y'all. Very much appreciated. Okay, Mr. Peppers.
Just a couple of items. First of all, I wanted to recognize the finance department. We did receive our certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Fifteen years in a row, we've received this. And wanted to personally thank Mr. Ingram, Melissa Forster, and Linda Patty that handle our finances for us. They do a great job.
That was sixteen years ago.
I wasn't here then. I was in college, so I don't know what happened. Good work. Second, second thing is, we, this will be on your agenda for the nineteenth, but I did want to bring it before you, so it can go on for possible action. The Raymond Rollins and the American Legion are submitting their application for the Veterans Day Parade, which of course parades have to be approved by council. And so that will be coming to you. That event, of course, is on Veterans Day, which is a Saturday this year, Saturday, November the eleventh. One thing that I would like to discuss with council is the early work package for the Jones Building. As you recall, we hired Garvick Construction to be our construction manager at risk on the project. They did out the early work package, which is basically the preparation of the site, fencing of the site, bringing in a construction trailer, things like that. The demolition of the interior, the selective demolition of the interior, and the abatement that goes on with that project as it relates to some asbestos lead paint, what have you. After bidding that out, they submitted to me the bids and have asked to be able to move forward on the project with the early work package. The total cost of the early work package is eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that falls in line with the original estimate that they provided to us when we approved their, their contract back in August. The one thing I would note in here is that the reason why we're doing the early package is as they go in and they do the selective demolition, that will give us better quantities and better figures as it relates to the not to exceed total construction cost, which is also inclusive of, of this number. There's a couple of issues in there where, you know, until they remove some things, they don't know exactly the number of windows, for instance, that have been covered up and, and what have you over time. So what I'm, what I'm doing is, is basically requesting your approval for me to be able to accept this. If we accept it, they're going to be able to start construction next week.
So I think we need to do that, and we think it's that important, and I think that we begin, and we've talked about this thing on and on, and he mentioned this, these same figures basically last month, so. Good, okay, you got that. Any other questions, comments, or anything?
There's one question, just if I heard you correctly, that this, this figure for the early package would be included in the total contract at risk?
That's correct.
So it'll be added in there later, so it's not like this is outside of that?
No.
Okay.
And so, so what's included in here is basically, there's six hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is the, the bid to do the demolition, abatement. There's a twenty-four thousand dollar contingency as it relates to demolition and abatement, which it's not spent, it's not spent. There's, there's a thirty-four thousand dollar construction management fee, and then there's a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that go into general conditions. That is for the preparation of the site, fencing of the site, locational trailer and all of that, which will be there throughout the project. And additionally, the work will be done in a two-month period. So our goal is to be able to bring back in November the not to exceed total price on the project, which is inclusive of this number.
Great. Anyone else? We're excited about getting going on that Jones Building, it's been, it's been a long time. Okay, next item.
No, motion second. We got a vote.
Okay. We didn't have the motion today, okay. Those in favor, say aye and say aye.
Aye.
Those noes? Who's no? Thank you, John.
In speaking with our council, we have received a request for a development agreement that basically would allow us to release the list pendants that we have on a property located at six ninety-one East Main Street. The property's been going through our courts as it relates to code enforcement issues. There is a purchaser of the property. The purchaser had a couple of specific questions for the city. In front of the, in front of that house is a sidewalk that currently has a wooden rail, basically, between the sidewalk and the property. There's about a two-foot drop from the sidewalk down to the property, and so there's a wooden rail there. I had public works staff go out there and look at a particular site. We're probably going to have to make improvements to that sidewalk. There's not a lot of under-pinning there and then that rail, it's not my favorite rail to look at, you know. I don't know structurally how it will do so. As we improve the sidewalk and improve the rail, which we need to do anyways, that was one of the issues they had brought up in the development agreement. But they would like the ability to basically have it postpone that list pendants and give them until December thirty-first to bring the property into compliance. So if we'll fix the sidewalk, they'll be able to purchase the property and then they'll bring it back into compliance before December thirty-first. This is really up, up for y'all to discuss, but what I was going to do is put it on the October nineteenth agenda for actual action.
This, just to put it in context, we did this on a house in North Ken. Where this, the list pendants is the end result of the court action for, like, and so they were ordering us to make repairs. The purchaser's come in and asked, just give me a little more time to make the repairs before you come tear it down, or whatever we're going to do.
Sure. I just have one question, Billy. The repair to this, the railing, we can do that internally. We don't have to contract that off, correct?
Um, sometimes on concrete work, we will contract it out. Just because we don't have a con, a concrete yard. We don't have a facility with that, but we, we probably would contract that particular workout. But we do have a sidewalk fund, so, I mean, it's a project that would just follow in the normal course of repairs to our infrastructure.
So when you come in two weeks, are you going to ask us to do what? To approve this legal action?
I approve the deal, but I think we would work on the sidewalk regardless.
Before that even?
It's, it's got to be done.
Before us?
Yes. It's just something that they had requested as part of the deal. But after we looked at it, we knew that we needed to fix it, so we're working to get it scheduled.
It almost sounds like a safety hazard. We should have Joel and go look and check that out. She, by the way, she fell on the sidewalk, tripped and broke her arm.
That's a joke.
Good question on that. If we decided to do this deal, what assurances or what conditions could we put on it? The house is brought up to code. How could we, because again, we've had these issues and it takes so long to, to get the list pendants and, you know, demo and all. I don't know the house we're talking about. What can we do to make sure that the house doesn't return back to apply the condition in a short period of time? That's my concern, so.
All of that is, is addressed in, I mean, right where we sit right now is we're free to go tear it down. And it's all we're doing is extending the deadline for that, for this short period of time. It's all going to happen very quickly.
For what, what period of time?
I don't remember. Is it, it was by the end of the year, but I think we lost a month and so I may push into January.
So if it hasn't been up there, you would still do that?
Correct. You'll see the agreement, but it, it, it basically says they have to have made substantial progress. Not necessarily finished, but we even have to pull permits and, and have gotten a long ways to where we're satisfied they're actually doing the work. We did this in that other house and I think it worked out well.
And then, but, but suppose, and they do the work and bring it up to code. Again, do we have any control over whether our, our code itself, enforcement of it returning back to?
Well, they're just like everybody else then.
Okay.
So does it, does this, would this require them to bring that house to current code?
Yeah, and I may have misspoken. I don't think this was a demolition. I think this was one where they were ordered to make certain repairs. And so we would have been coming to you with a, a choice of what to do, whether we were going to make the repairs for them or not. So this wasn't necessarily a demolition one, so I want to clear that out.
Let's see, the inspection report was that there was no reliable safe source of heat, no power to rear room or bathroom, no air conditioning or screens over windows. You have to have one or the other. The front door needed to be replaced. There was a large hole. Front porch and decks have obvious structural issues, crawl space had several electrical slices that were not in boxes. Exterior had raw wood, soffit exposed. And there were no smoke detectors through the entire house. And as a rental property, it was required to have three.
So that, so it's currently a rental property. They could bring that to the minimum code, whatever, but do we know, or as part of the deal, how they're going to use the property, what they're going to use, or would it return to rental property is my guess, but?
Well, I mean, it, it will, it, it just will return to habitability. Whether somebody lives there or rents it is not the scope of this.
And it would have to be residential.
Right, all of that is part of residential.
Yeah, it's in a residential, it's, it's, it's in a residential zone. I don't think they could do anything else.
Would we, would we be asking that they bring this up to current code for plumbing, electrical?
I think it was just those items that was listed and kept it. Remember, this was the
If they do those items, I was just about to get there.
Right, and I, exactly, and I think the purchaser is saying, whoop him out the sidewalk. He's saying, well, I'm putting all this money, why don't you come fix your thing? Which is the sidewalk.
Isn't this the house that came up before we were going to demolish it and somebody stepped up, wanted to buy it?
No, we, we've already done that deal in North Ken. This is a different one, but the same, it, it wasn't a demolition. I, I misspoke. It was a list of repairs they were ordered to make by a certain date, which would put us in a position, I haven't decided to make the repairs for them or not.
Thank you. As you recall, we did the old ball ground, or sewer project, or the old ball ground sewer project. And doing that project, we had received a construction easement from the Riverwalk Townhome Association. Those are the townhouses that are next to the Canton Mill loft. As we've worked on the project, we had kind of, we had kind of put into their court, you know, tell us exactly what trees you want to put in and things like that. They went out, they had a couple of different quotes come in on landscape to do that work. And in reviewing the scope of the work, speaking, speaking with Mr. Dyer about this, I've got what I would recommend to you to, to consider on the nineteenth agenda, which is basically a settlement agreement where we're going to provide the funds to the HOA. They can go and hire their, their contractor to do the work. And they have to agree to a settlement agreement, so we're out of it from that phase moving forward. And so we'll put that on the agenda for the nineteenth and give you a copy of the plans and all that to go with it. We could go do the work ourselves, but then we'd have to warranty it, make sure it's taken care of. It's much better for the private sector to take care of that issue.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? I fortunately or unfortunately talked to the head of the HOA one time. Just ran into him and he started telling me all about this. Is the proposal that they have reasonable? Are we going to be presented with something that makes sense or does it kind of not make sense?
So what I asked them to do was to get with, to bring us back at least three quotes on the work. And then I had the public works director review all of those quotes and compare those to costs that we've had for similar items. We agreed to a quote, I believe it was eleven thousand, six hundred dollars that was landscaped and included the labor and a one-year warranty on the landscape for the group. And that seemed like a very reasonable request and kind of fit within what we had as an allowance in that project to get the work done.
So you've already determined the best of the three?
Correct.
And that's what we're going to see in two weeks?
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and I guess one thing to be clear on. The, the question was sort of, the city doing and how do we manage and all that? All we're really doing is settling a claim. They, we damaged their property. They're saying, pay, so we're just paying them that. And so the details really don't matter.
Right, so, so if they decided
We just give it to the amount.
If they decided once that, once we had paid that amount, that they decided that they didn't want to use that company or they wanted to do something else, then that would follow them. But they wouldn't have any more claims as it relates to the construction easement.
Did, did any of the vegetation that we attempted to put out there survive?
A good bit of, a good bit of the sod
Did that back?
No, no, I don't think so. A good bit of the sod did survive. The, the issue that we got into out there is when the project was completed was when we were in the dry part of last year. And then we ended up with a wet part, a very wet winter. And so, you know, when we had talked with them originally, they wanted to go forward with planting trees. We were still in the dry part of last year. We talked about waiting until a cooler time to install the trees so that they have a better opportunity. During that timeframe, they said, look, maybe the better option is for us to just come up with a plan and, and get it done. And so we, we kind of discussed that in lieu of us doing the work.
It reminds me of another one, which you did that. Because what you do then by giving the money is that if the weather's a problem, wet, dry, whatever, it's your problem, not our problem. And we can't control that.
Correct.
It's there.
And, and it's, it's hard to make things just like a group wants unless you let the group decide what they want to do with themselves. Brick Mill Road, I believe I sent you all an email about, about Brick Mill Road. That is a road that's outside the city limits in Cherokee County, but we have water service line on that roadway. Cherokee County's working on a project to do a little bit of realignment to that roadway and topcoat it. The city received the lines, the water lines on that road when the service delivery law was passed by the state. And it was basically given to us as part of our service delivery area by Cherokee County. Currently, the, the realignment of the road is going to make us shift our water line for about two hundred and fifty feet along that roadway. Cherokee County is requesting us to do the work. As you know, at the last meeting, we had it approved to do some emergency work on the Marietta Circle. Backing up a little bit, Cherokee County went out, tried to get somebody to bid on doing the work and it's kind of a small project, so it was hard to get anybody to bid on it. I asked Mr. Hatabian to reach out to a contractor who's doing that emergency work for us on the Marietta Circle to go out and give us a, a cost estimate to do this project as an addition to their current job, since they're already mobilized in the area. Basically, we have a not to exceed price of about forty-five thousand dollars to shift that line off of the roadway. I would recommend that we do it, but that we also require that the county provide us with a hold on list on the old line. It sounds like now they're planning to leave that old line in the roadway. And I wouldn't want a situation where at some point that line collapses and they come back to us and say, well, why didn't you move your line? Now, we, we agreed to move the line and if you didn't pull it out when you were doing construction, it's on you at that point. I think that's, that will help them get their project done. We've taken care of our infrastructure, but we've also protected ourselves on that liability as well.
I just a comment, the Marietta Circle job is being done right now.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, we, we voted on that at a work session a month ago.
That's correct.
They're in there doing the work.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
This week is the twenty-fifth anniversary of Georgia Pre-K. The lottery-funded Pre-K.
I know the opportunity.
Yeah, it's interesting fact, I had the opportunity on Monday to read to two classes of four-year-olds at Canton Elementary School. And what I found out was very interesting. There are nine Pre-K classes in Cherokee County. Four of them are in the city limits, two at Canton Elementary School, two at Hasty Elementary School. So about ninety four-year-olds that are in Pre-K here. And it was a good opportunity to represent the city and I think the kids enjoyed it as well, so.
Anyone else? Just go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Grant planted a seed earlier when we were talking about Canton Heights and things that need to be done for South Canton. I'd like to plant the seed that we start looking at Grant, maybe with ARC to get started with a, a plan, a strategic plan for the south side. What do y'all think?
I think we should have done it yesterday.
We're lying. We should have. So let, let's get this started and look for money to get a plan made for South Canton.
Okay. Off of that, I believe when we discussed, you know, the LCI update and the downtown master plan, it was then to extend it, Sunnyside, South Canton. I don't know both of those, I don't know what the, the boundaries are, but to connect, you know, and build out from the plan. But I mean, if, if both of those areas could be done, you have, under that grant, I think it's great. But definitely, I mean, as soon as we can just see what the money is out there, you know. I think we need to do it regardless, but if we can get contributions from the ARC toward that, I think it just, this is further down the road, so.
And I would mention too, in those areas, traffic has been delayed a little bit this week because we are doing our sploß paving in those areas. And so the very first project that's, that's going to wrap up is the Marietta highway paving that goes from just north of Unibet or up to the connection at twenty and hundred ways, so that's ongoing right now.
Yeah, I get to watch it go down my window, back up by my window all day.
Okay, good though, I know I voted on one lane today. Anyone else have a question, comment? If not, I'm going to pay the most of the jury. Someone? Mr. Grant and Mr. Russ. You get it, you know what? I think we've been here long enough, I think you just don't stay here and wait for that. I'll elaborate.